Welcome to the November 2nd, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Matt giving the invocation. And I'll have you approach the podium and also congratulations with your new little baby.
Yes.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you have given us and another opportunity we have to serve you. We thank you for these men and women who serve our city on this council. And as they continue to lead our city this evening, we pray that you would give them wisdom. Wisdom to seek your good and wisdom to seek the good of the people they serve. In addition, we pray for the citizens of Muscatine gathered in this room. We lift up their cares and concerns that they have brought here tonight. We pray for understanding on behalf of our city's leaders in regards to these concerns. And we pray for understanding on behalf of the citizens as to the end decisions that will be made regarding these matters. May you give us the peace and the unity we need as we work together to seek the welfare of this city. And Father, I close by praying for the good of the city of Muscatine. Pour out your goodness, your grace, your love, your peace, your unity upon this city. Bless every decision, every action, and every citizen for your good, your glory, and the advancement of your gospel. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Matt, thank you so much for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Taking time out of your schedule. Cindy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Freilich.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Hello?
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next item is five. We're going to have Captain Urick come up to the podium and give a brief overview on the law enforcement, mental health, and wellness grant award. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator. Back in 2001, the police department, along with consulting group, reinforcement consultants, applied for a federal mental health and wellness grant for first responders, specifically police. We were fortunate enough in order to receive that award back in 2021. And with that award, what we have done is that through the police, fire, and through Muscatine Communications or MusComs, we were able to get certified and develop a peer support group of about 15 members. Because of that, what we are now certified and protected under law of like confidentiality, we can go out and we can offer peer support for first responders. And that was most recently seen in a deadly fire that happened in LeWise County this past week where we sent a team down there to deal with the first responders. We were one of 60 agencies across the United States that received this funding. And we went up against your larger agencies, your Cook Counties, your Denver Colorados, Los Angeles, New York, and again, one of 60 agencies that were awarded that. That's a two-year grant. And in 2023, we were also applied for with the help of Sharla from the Community Foundation in cooperation, again, with Fire, MusCom, and ourselves, along with Dr. Carlson and Reinforcement Consultants. We applied for another first responder or police law enforcement, mental health, and wellness grant, and we were successful in that application. We were one of 60 agencies across the United States that were awarded this. We were one of only six agencies that were re-awarded from the original one in '21. I think that that's important to bring up because that's a testament to the team that has been built here. We have taken our peer support and we have expanded on that to what we plan on doing here in the future. With that, the original award in '21 was $85,000. And I am extremely happy to tell you folks tonight that our grant award for this next two years is $200,000.
Wow.
Awesome job.
I thank you for the council. I thank you for City Administrator for our continued support for law enforcement, specifically first responders. Speak on behalf of the Fire Department as well as MusCom. I say thank you for that, and we look forward to what we're going to do from here.
Wonderful job.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
Your Honor, we do not need to have the closed session this evening, so we need to pull it from the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Any other items? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne? Perfect. Okay. All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item is communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? And we have a list of three right here. The first one is Ed Zeman from Wilton. Name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
I'm Ed Zeman. I live at 1111 West Third Street in Wilton, Iowa. And I'm here on behalf of the former residents of the Welch Apartments. And I'm pretty sure that Mayor Bark and the rest of the council is familiar with the situation there. But over two months ago, they were given a certain amount of time, I mean minutes, to gather five days' worth of belongings to get them by, and they were put into a hotel. Since then, there's been some arrangements, monetary arrangements, to get these people started in a different place. And Welch has been very good about that, I would like to say. Now, 15 minutes or whatever minutes it takes to get belongings, it's not a lot of time and it's no warning or anything. So in these apartments was left a lot of personal possessions, things like loved ones, possibly loved ones, ashes, pictures, mementos and things. And they were wondering when and if they would ever be able to retrieve these items, irreplaceable items, things you can't buy at Walmart. I have a... People that are willing to sign waivers to go up there and gather up a few things, the things that mean the most to them. I'm not talking furniture, I'm talking mementos, pictures and such. And I myself would be willing to sign a waiver and do that as well. I don't know where the inspection of the building is at. Has there been an inspection? An update would really be appreciated. I was just informed that approximately almost two weeks ago, the residents were told that they would receive a letter with an update from the City Administrator's office. None of them has received anything. I was wondering where that was at, where we were at with that. There is a specific resident who lived in apartment 305, who is mentally handicapped. And I don't think I need to say that mentally handicapped people take this stuff at a far greater level, personal things. Specifically, this one resident had lived there for 16 years with his mom, and his mom passed away. And he would like to retrieve her. They're valuable, very valuable to him, and he would like to have those. It's hard to explain.
Oh, time's up. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sandy Grady. Name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Sandra Grady, 1503 Hauser Street in Muscatine, Iowa. I just want to embellish on what he said about getting our belongings. Most of us have medical conditions. I myself had open heart surgery two years ago. This is very stressful, and we just want answers. We just want to know when we can go in and get our stuff. Mostly just health concerns. We'd like to get in there and get our stuff. There was medicine left in there. Just personally, my cat was left in there. The Fire Department had to go in through a window to get the cat. And so, you know, my other concern is that the street was closed on Third Street. The parking lot behind the building was closed, so that was a Clark House parking lot. And they're using our parking lot, which is up on the corner. And there were two apartments behind boonies that aren't even connected to the Welch, and they were forced to leave as well. I don't understand why nobody's concerned about the boonies, about, you know, the building falling that way. Is it magically going to fall this way or this way and not that way? You know, I feel it's a bit of discrimination against us. I mean, we're all low-income elderly people, some handicapped, and it's just not fair. It's just not fair. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Grady. And next, we have John Elsoff. Name and address, please, and we'll give you three minutes.
John Elsoff, and the address is 106 Lourdes Avenue here in Muscatine. Purpose of my visit tonight is to bring good news to the council and to the city in that very shortly, we're going to be holding Veterans Day on Saturday, November 11th. For the past eight years, I've been serving as a yoga teacher at the Muscatine Community Y. And it's been approved for me to hold a yoga class for all veterans, first responders, and caregivers here in the city of Muscatine. And I'm here tonight to help spread the word that I want to invite all the people in the community from this area. I've spoken with the Muscatine County Vet Rep, and there are currently 2,000 veterans in Muscatine County that are receiving aid and assistance through the VA, through medical services in Iowa City and Davenport. There's currently no site available in Muscatine where a veteran can get help other than in Iowa City and in Davenport. And there's a group that has been formed that is... I was informed of through the VA newsletter that there's a Veteran Yoga Project encouraging yoga teachers to take training specifically to deal with veterans that are suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder and also other associated traumas, along with first responders. And I'm glad to hear that there's so much information going out about first responders. That's forthcoming. I'm looking out the possibility of taking the training for this and having that available here in Muscatine by December, if all goes well. But in the short run, what I'd again like to do, just reinforce the idea that I'm trying to put out as much word, posters and everything as I can right now about a free yoga class for veterans, first responders, and caregivers. Caregivers are people that not only work in hospitals, they work with handicapped people, they work in the nursing homes, facilities, those are caregivers. We want them all to feel welcome. That's my message tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He didn't mention the location and time.
Location and time.
Mr. Elsoff.
Location and time. Muscatine Community Y, 3:00 PM, Saturday, November 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to make a call?
Yeah, is that our next speaker?
Yep.
This is unusual.
He's Spanish speaking, so they have to get an interpreter.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Leonardo Cruz. Vivo en Muscatine, en La Leroy Street.
My name is Jackie Cruz. I'm his daughter. I live on Orange Street. And today, he wants... He has a few questions for you all today, so if you could just give him some answers. The first question is, with the elections of the city council coming up, do y'all have like an event where it's like for public and that way you can talk about what you would do as like serving on the council? Is there such an event like that?
We'll answer it afterwards if you just want to ask the questions right now.
That was a question. That was one of the questions.
Okay, so the answer is it's on TV, but we can answer it after you're done asking the questions.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Second question is, so he sees a lot of signs on like people's houses of the different candidates. He's wondering if that's like the people's choice or if it's something that the candidates will work out with the people and it's like a type of like endorsement almost. There's been signs on private properties as well, so that's why he's wondering. And the last question is if the public or community is not in favor of the mayor, if there's only one candidate, who would the responsibility go to after? Those are all the questions.
Perfect. All right. I guess if you want to take a seat, we'll be able to answer those in just a sec. We just want to make sure if there's any other questions.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium?
You can't hear him.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll repeat it. Is there any follow-up from council members with any of the topics?
Is somebody going to respond to Mr. Cruz?
Yep. So I would say that the first one, the question that you asked regarding, is there like a forum? There's not a forum. You can watch items on TV, on MPW, and then also YouTube channel as well.
Facebook.
And Facebook. Do you want to answer the second one?
Just going to Muscatine also has items on YouTube that are like on TV, but interviews on YouTube and also on Discover, Muscatine, they have a Discover the Candidates page. It has a pretty good summary of all the running candidates.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll give you one question, yes. And I'll have you approach the podium again.
Yeah, my follow-up question to that is just, while watching on TV, is there a way to ask questions from the public? Or is it just purely speaking, just you all speaking? There's no questionnaire, Q and A?
There's no live Q and A.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Can I say something, Mayor? A lot of times when candidates are running, some candidates go door-to-door knocking. Some candidates, usually if they're running, if you can find their information, if you call them, they're willing to answer any questions. So I had that when I was running. People... I had my phone number out there so that they could call me and ask me, you know, how do you stand on this or how do you stand on this? What are your values? Yep.
People's choice in the signs.
Yeah, so as to the signs, there's sort of a traditional method to get the names out there because we have the electronic methods, which have sort of taken over since COVID. I mean, we had to change things. But the signs are sort of an endorsement, or you would ask your friends or neighbors or people that support you if you can place a sign in their yard. So it's more of a... I would go and ask Mayor Bark and say, may I place a sign in your yard as a courtesy? And he would say yes or no. He said yes. But it's more of a courtesy. There's some yards that are very busy, like on Clay Street in Isit. You see a lot of signs because it's a key location. But it's more of a, I support you, John is in my yard, and Mayor's in my yard, and I have a couple school board members. So it's more of a support of a friend, neighbor type thing. Does that make sense? It's not a paid endorsement. He doesn't have to send me chocolate chip cookies or anything, but... And it also doesn't have to reach in your area because everybody in town goes all over town. So you'll see like John's in other areas because he's not in my area, but I have his sign, so.
And I know like in Davenport, they actually have... I was kind of surprised when I was coming out of Davenport yesterday. I went up to see my son, and one of their candidates had a billboard. I was like, whoa!
Yeah.
So I was like, I don't know if I'd go to that extent, but I thought that was kind of a different way or a different avenue, too.
So I'll go ahead and take the third question, too. And it's not only just like the mayor, since he only had... There's nobody opposing the mayor. So you could vote for the mayor, or there's a write-in. So if somebody else wanted to have their name written in, to try, they could write their name. So we could put your name in.
So your question is, is in the event that we would basically center the mayor, the mayor wasn't doing something right as a council, do we have a right to fire the mayor? Is that what you're asking? Or fire one of our council members? Is that what you're asking?
Do you want to answer that, Carol?
Yeah, there's a process outlined in the city code that allows for removal of an elected official. And I think the criteria there are upon which an elected official can be removed. I can help you with that if you need it. I can give you the code. Yeah. Yep.
And please feel free to reach out to any of the council members. If you've got questions, all of our numbers are out there on the web to give us a call or if you want to grab a number before. So, yeah, we're more than happy to answer questions.
Did that answer your questions, do you think?
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up with the questions that were asked earlier?
Sure. We're happy to... Andrew Fangman is here and can speak to the status of Welch Apartments if council would like to hear that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
Mayor, Council, I did speak to the owner's representative today to get kind of a status update. I think that the big news is they've, in the past couple days, they've completed the engineering assessment that tells them what they need to do to shore up the building, which would allow people to go in and get the items and for us to open up Third Street. They are now in the process of entering a contract with a contractor to perform that work. Once they have that signed contract, they're going to reach out to the residents and the community as a whole to let them know the timeline. At this point, because they don't have a contractor with a signed contract, there is no timeline for that, but they are very actively working on that. So I think all in all, it's very good news. I think one of the big holdups was getting that engineered plan for shoring up the building, and that's now been completed.
Councilmember Brockert?
Will they be able to retrieve all of their belongings, Andrew, up to and including furniture?
I... My understanding, and I don't want to overstate my understanding, is the idea is, once the shoring up's complete, then it'd be safe to enter the building kind of as normal and for them to remove the items, but also for them to perform the long-term work to stabilize and reopen the building.
Okay. Do we have any idea of the scope of the work that the contractor will be asked to do?
At this moment, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
We can certainly update the council as soon as we have more information.
They'll be applying for the appropriate permits for that, so we will know more shortly.
Councilmember Gordon?
I just want to, you know, I'm glad they came because these personal items are very important to them. They might be willing to give up furniture, but let's try to get everything. But let's try to get it to the point where they can, with assistance, get their items out, and let's use technology. We can send cameras in. They don't need to go in, but they could guide us maybe. So let's look at some alternatives that might speed up that process. So just consider it. Think about if you have an approved staffing or contractors to do it, they could take cameras in. Somebody could be saying, I've got that, I need that, I pass on that. So let's look at other uses if we can, because we can't wait till spring to get this done. And that's my concern.
Yeah. Yeah, my reason for asking, Andrew, is because one of the ladies who is here tonight is my son's mother-in-law. She has found other lodging, housing, but she was afraid she's going to have to start all over again as far as her furniture, bedding, all that sort of thing. And that's kind of an expensive proposition, too. So if they're allowed to at least get their furniture and be able to do something to make their current living arrangements maybe more permanent.
My understanding is that that's what they are working hard to get to, that point.
Okay, that's great. I thank you for your efforts.
Any other questions? Thank you. Councilmember Osborne?
Yes, Jeff, one thing that continuously comes up is, was brought up again tonight about, you know, Third Street's blocked off, but not the other side of the building, you know? Good question about information around, you know, how do we know which way the building's going to fall? Anyone elaborate on that aspect?
My understanding, it has to do with where the defect in the wall is, so...
Did you hear that, Councilmember Osborne?
I... Pardon me. My understanding is it's, you know, the issues are isolated to the wall along Third Street and not... and not the rest of the building, and so that kind of is the answer.
Yep, that's my understanding of the situation, yes.
Does that satisfy the person that answered that or asked that question?
They're, they're not here right now.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrew. All right, next item, the following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes item 10A, items 11A through C, items 12A through C, 13, item 13A, and item 14A, with bills totaling $2,790,541.11?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne and a second by Councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. The next item is 17A, is a second reading of an ordinance creating a construction, appeal, and advisory board. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is 17B, is a resolution to award and approve a contract with Henley Group LLC in the amount of $122,000 and a performance bond with Zip Bonds for the Taylor Park restroom project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a request to declare a list of items from multiple departments as surplus so they can be disposed of by public auction. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted? So moved. We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with council?
Just have a question on one of the items.
Can you repeat that?
We got a question on one of the items from the library. Is there anyone there to talk to that, about the microfiche reader?
Nope.
No, there's not. Assistant Mr. Webb, did you want to?
That would be that those, if, if the current cards have been scanned into an electronic form, that would be the preferred method. I'm sure that that's probably been done, and that was my question to just verify that. If not, replacing that equipment can be very expensive and, so. I, without anyone really to discuss it, I don't think there's anything really further than that. My hope is that that is obsolete because all of the materials have been digitally recorded versus needing that kind of equipment anymore, is my input.
I think council could approve it subject to that verification, and if it's not, then we won't surplus that item.
I make a motion to amend, I guess, would be the way to say that.
Is it amend or?
I think you can make a friendly amendment, just, if everyone's good with that, make that motion.
Is everybody okay with that? A friendly amendment, okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is D, is a request to approve fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual financial report to the state of Iowa. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne? All opposed, nay. Motion passes with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Martin and Whitaker Surveyors and Engineers, Inc. in the amount of $45,480 for additional land surveying services on the remainder of West Hill Sewer Separation Project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted? So moved. We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Last item is a request to approve annual street finance report for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next, we'll have Councilmember Lewis. Is there anything you'd like to update us with?
Just a couple of things tonight, Mayor. Just a reminder, turn your clocks back on Sunday. And also remember that Tuesday is Election Day, so go out and vote. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hopkins?
I have nothing, sir.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yeah, just one thing I just want to call out on the election coming up on Tuesday, that the school board has a community school district revenue purpose statement. We recommend that everybody votes yes. It is not a tax, it's not an increase or anything. It just lays out the foundation for them to be able to have funds to spend in the future. So it's a simple yes or no, and it's on the ballot. Please vote yes to just shore up the, the school system, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Freilich?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brockert?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Nothing tonight.
Cinda? Assistant Mr. Webb? And I will take a motion to adjourn. So moved.